Customers walk in sometimes.
You know, all these boards are all jacked up.
Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, February 7. Okay, our first item for this evening or for this afternoon is an exciting presentation from Lynn County Trails Association. We'll let Kesha take it from here.
Yes, Kesha Billings, Associate Planner with the Planning Department here. I would like to introduce Tom Heffer, who is an integral player. If you want to come up here with the Lynn County Trails Association. So he's going to have a little a little intro to kind of what got us here today.
Thank you, Kim. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Tom Heffer. I have your address.
Go ahead.
Twenty four eighty three Grand Avenue, Cedar Rapids.
Thank you.
LCTA's motto is we make trails happen. So in addition to providing maps of Lynn County Trails, providing trail counters around Lynn County, sponsoring events and trail rides with our partners, providing bike corrals at events such as Uptown Marion, and generally advocating for trail expansion. We also raise money on occasion to help trail building costs. I mean, what amazing job you guys have done in the last, particularly in the last five to 10 years. The Grantwood Trail from Lindell Drive across two amazing bridges all the way through Marion to Highway thirteen. The Tenth Avenue side paths that recently came online. The Indian Creek Trail, which is incredibly beautiful. And the Seamar Trail, which has been around since as long as I've been around, but which will be completed within the next two years. We know that you have been doing that faithfully and diligently, and we really appreciate that. We also know that that kind of trail building is expensive and that Marion typically has to provide twenty percent of the total project costs. So periodically, we corner Kesha and say, how can we best help? What's the trail project that would move the ball fastest, furthest within the trail system? And this year, it was the Luco Road and Pedestrian Bridge Design Project. We hope that that this money will help not only speed up the construction ultimately, but help with the city's twenty percent, which we know is kind of a big deal. So we got together, we had a $300,000 goal, hundred thousand to Marion, hundred thousands to Cedar Rapids, a hundred thousand dollars to Lynn County Conservation. We had 400 individuals contributing, 25 businesses. We got help with Paul Ryan Foundation and the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. And we raised $300,000. So that was very cool. So just know that LCT appreciates all that you do. And we're very happy to be able to present this hundred thousand dollar check. The real check's gone to Kesha already. Although, I don't know if you fill out the envelope, but there is a check in there. But this is a representative check, and we'd like, actually, we'd like all of you to come down and take a photo, do a photo op with us if you're, if you have the time.
Absolutely. We're hap- we're happy to do that. And I just, well, I just wanted to say, Tom, and to everyone who has has helped with this, you know, I often say that a lot of the things that are very meaningful in our community that actually make a meaningful impact on people's lives are done by volunteers. And this is just such a great example of that. We have people who care so much to and as you know, we have lots of competing priorities for fewer and fewer funds. And so this, this is an amazing way to really impact what we're doing. And we pride ourselves here on creating a great quality of life for people and giving them great opportunities, not only for people in Marion, but the region. And this, this really just helps us in that endeavor. So thank you so much. We're very grateful.
Everybody get out on the trails.
Always great to start our meeting with an exciting presentation like that. So, all right. Our next item on the agenda for this work session is a presentation from the Lynn County Solid Waste Agency. And hello.
Hello.
We have Joe.
Going from trails to trash here. So I do not have a $100,000 check for you. I apologize.
Well.
You have some good information, I hope. So I'm Joe Harini, the Communications Director for the Solid Waste Agency. And today, talking about our services and programs, the brief history of the agency. We were founded back in nineteen ninety four. We have a nine-member Board of Directors with six officials from the City of Cedar Rapids, two Lynn County Supervisors, Ben Rogers and Louis Zumba, who's our Board Chair, and then one appointee from the City of Marion, Craig Adamson, told me he was going to try and come here tonight unless his daughter had a wrestling meet. So I think she did. So let's see, and we operate our two locations. If you've ever seen the newspaper, Site Two, that is our landfill and resource recovery building on a county home road. Site One is Mount Trashmore, our closed landfill in Cedar Rapids. And then Site Three is our compost facility, which is adjacent to Mount Trashmore down by Chuck Village. So I'll begin with our changes we have coming up here for fiscal year twenty four on July 1st. We're having some tipping fee increases. Garbage disposal is going to be going up $3 to $45 per ton up from the current forty two. Flat fees are also going to be changing. The flat fee for cars will be $12 per load. SUVs and minivans, $15 per load. And then the flat fee for pickups and full-size vans, $22 per load. This is what I always like to tell folks, if you only have one bag of garbage, please use your curbside services. Ryan and his team do a great job. You'd be amazed at the amount of people that come out there with one bag of garbage and a pickup truck. Right now, they're getting charged twenty. It's going up to twenty two. So unless you have five to six extra bags of garbage, use your curbside services. It makes a lot more economic sense. It'll save all that gas coming out to CS2. So those are the changes coming up for the garbage tipping fees. Our yard waste fee will be going up to twenty eight per ton, a $2 increase. Minimum $10 load. Again, doesn't affect Marion residents too much because we can use the facility over on Thirty Fifth Street. And then commercial recycling is going up to $90 per ton. That's a $5 increase. The agency is charged $106 per ton when we take it to Republic Services over on Ingleside Drive Southwest. That's where the actual processing. So the cost helps us offset. We just, we pay for that, that extra because we want to make sure that communities to continue to recycle. Because we want to keep diverting all the material out of the landfill that we can. As for our recycling services, much visiting, no charge for residents. If they do want to bring that up, so your plastic, paper products, cardboard, getting a lot of cardboard, especially since COVID. Hey, if you ever go into our Resource Recovery Building, we have an area just for cardboard. Don't have to break it down or anything, just come in and drop it off, no charge. The items that we do have a fee for are staying the same. Appliances, $10 per unit. Tires are $3 per tire. No charge for scrap metal, but we don't pay for scrap metal. We always tell folks, if you think it has value, please take it to Marion Iron. They'll give you some money for it. We mostly get like rusted out lawnmowers, things like that. And then we do take batteries and medical sharps and syringes for no charge as well inside our Resource Recovery Building. And also inside there, our TBM monitor recyclings are staying the same. TVs are $15 per unit regardless of size and weight. We still get the giant old big box TVs. They're still out there. So that's the same charge as a flat screen. All other electronics, no charge. So VCRs, DVD players. Basically, if you can plug it in and it's not an appliance, we take it for no charge. Again, that's inside the Resource Recovery Building. And then hazardous material, recycling drop offs, old paints, chemicals, stains, cleaners, that's free for all Lynn County residents. And then anything that is still usable, we have a free paint cleaners, et cetera, room that we call it. We put that inside there, and that's available to the public for free as well. Basically, that building is just kind of a big transfer station. Folks, come in, drop it off. We ship it out to the different vendors who take care of it after that and then move on. So it's pretty convenient. We try to make it as easy as possible. Education and outreach, we do have a licensed teacher on staff after a couple of year hiatus because of COVID, tours have resumed. So we get students from Marion Independent, the Lindmark Community School District, all over, works with different groups. We have a lot of retirement homes in the Marion area that he works with as well. Go and do presentations to them. So if you know anyone that's ever looking for information about either landfilling or composting, those tours are available. We can come out, they can come to us, whatever works best. As for Mount Trashmore, it will be reopening later this spring, completely weather dependent. It's pretty wet down there, of course. We got to wait for that to dry out. The trails will be open. If you've never been down there, great, great view from the top. So I suggest take that in if you can. We work with the New Bo Main Street District on the Mount Trashmore Challenge. That's for going up and down it one hundred and forty seven times. That's the equivalent of scaling Mount Everest. So that's been a big success the last two years, and you get a T-shirt for signing up. So it's pretty cool. Let's see, and then also that, like I said, that'll be open this spring, and then it runs through the end of the, end of the season into the fall, winter, depending on the weather. Our compost facility is open and our compost is available free to all Lynn County residents. We have no limit on how much you can take. So you come in with a bucket. We have people coming in with just buckets and shovels. People come in trailers. If you're a Lynn County resident, free as much as you want. And wood chips are also available. We used to charge for wood chips. The duration will happen, and now wood chips are available for free to anyone who can use them. We have a big supply of them. We're actually at capacity at our compost facilities. We're actually not able to take large loads of trees anymore. So people are coming in, saying, it's like setting a new subdivision, things like that, and they have tree clearing projects. We can no longer take in those trees. You just, we no longer have the space to take it in. So residents coming in with like one tree, no problem. Yard waste, things like that. But the big tree clearing, we're letting all the excavators in the area know that, hey, find a way to use it on site, bring in your own grinder, because we just don't have the capacity down there anymore. And so we get some of that material moved out. But every community I've talked to so far in Lynn County has the same issue with too much wood waste. So we're all kind of in the same boat there. As for the landfill future, we are, we're planning for the future. We know that we're going to be closing June thirtieth, twenty forty four will be the last day that that location will be open. We're actually going to probably be full before then at the current rate that we're going. The duration took a couple of years of capacity off the life of the landfill. And right now, projections show that we only have fifteen years of capacity left. So around twenty thirty six, twenty thirty seven. That's going to go up a little bit. We're in a new area of our landfill. So when they're doing the capacity studies, the base layer is made up of municipal solid waste. So City of Cedar Rapids, City Marion, we made the first four feet, all of that softer waste. And now the construction demolition waste is going on top of that. So it's going to push it down a little bit. Now to give us a couple of years back. What we're looking at right now, we probably have to find six years of space, or that site is going to get full before twenty forty four. So our board has been looking at what are alternatives to landfilling, and we're calling that process forward twenty forty four. What we're going to do after that location does close, because we know, yes, we're going to close June thirtieth, twenty forty four. Come July first, there's still going to be six to seven hundred tons of garbage that has to go somewhere. So our board's going through this process, looking at different opportunities, looking at what alternatives are there that are viable, both economically and environmentally sound. Looking for different partnerships. One of the big ones is Organics Management. State of Iowa did a big waste sort this summer where they went to eleven different landfills across the state. They went to Metro Waste in Des Moines, which is the biggest, us were second. Black Hawk County, Dubuque, and some of the smaller landfills sorted out representative loads of all the garbage coming in over the course of a week. Broke it down into eighty different categories, what people are throwing away. So literally pulling out the garbage, taking it apart, piece by piece, seeing what's in the garbage. And the biggest thing is pretty consistent across the state, twenty to twenty five percent of the garbage everywhere in Iowa is organic waste, so food waste. So looking at opportunities that how we can divert more through the composting process, maybe anaerobic digestion, things like that. Looking for funding opportunities, you know, swap grants to the state, environmental management system grants, things that we can do. And just letting folks know, going after the little hanging fruit, because people are still throwing away things that probably could have been diverted through recycling or reuse, so making sure everyone is aware of that. And then also looking at other things like potentially transfer stations. If we do get full before twenty forty four, that location will probably operate as a transfer station. So the garbage will still come there, but instead of being landfilled, put into open-top containers, and then we'll take it out to a landfill that can handle the material. And before, also after twenty forty four, there will not be another landfill in Lynn County. As City Marion remembers, you know, back in the early two thousands, trying to decide a new landfill, very contentious issue. We all need land, all need someplace for the garbage to go. No one wants one near them. Understand that. So our board has decided there will not be a new landfill site in Lynn County. There's just too many zoning restrictions. There's actually no available parcels of land that are big enough that we can do an apples to apples to what we have right now. So a lot of these factors, looking at what we can do to handle that. We do know a landfill will be part of the solution. It just won't be a landfill here in Lynn County. Because even with composting, recycling and reuse, at the end of the day, there's just some things that you can't go in that process. They have to go somewhere. It's just not going to be here in Lynn County. So in the meantime, what does that mean? We're still open, still serving the community. If there's anything that we can do for the City of Marion, let us know. We're in contact with Ryan quite a bit, letting him know he knows, he's aware of this. So want to make sure that we're so many of the needs of our community as we're planning for the future. So we can be serving the community till twenty forty four and beyond.
Okay, well, thank you. Questions? I'm sure someone has questions. Go ahead. And then Steve.
Okay, thank you. With the recycles, what's the market value for, let's say, corrugated and some of the other general recycles that we, you know, would bring in for no charge? What, how's that market look?
It depends monthly. So when, when COVID hit, paper had no value for five years. Like, there's a lot of communities where paper was actually just being landfilled. And then paper came back as well, paper towels and things like that. So had value for a while. And since that's where, you know, talk of inflation has hit, all markets have gone down. So like OCC, old card cardboard, that market has gone down in value. So it changes by month to month. It's basically like a market thing. So we tried to ride it out because we know it's going to go up and down. And we don't want people to be like, yeah, one month we're taking this, one month we're not, because we don't want people to get out of the habit of recycling. For example, plastics in the United States, there's only markets for plastics ones and twos. Free through seven have no value. We continue to take three through sevens curbside, the curbside here in Marion, you know, you can throw, you can put them in there. We take them at our location. But oftentimes, it's going to, when it gets to Republic, they're sorting it out, and they can find markets for ones and twos, threes and sevens, offense are going to be brought back to us as residuals, so as waste. When, when, basically when oil gets expensive, fives become valuable again, but really, three, four, six and seven, pretty much don't have value.
All right.
Yeah. So it really depends. Metal's always generally pretty good, even it goes down a little bit during, with the inflation incoming. But yeah, month, month to month, it's different.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That was your only question? All right. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in and keeping us updated.
You got it. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is an overview regarding utility terrain vehicles. Chief.
Afternoon.
Welcome.
Started off with a big check.
No check for you.
And you had the landfill. Now you got me. But don't despair, it gets worse because Barcalow's up next. So I'll be very grateful.
You're just asking for money. You're not giving us money.
Yeah. I do have good news. You asked, we, you guys approved UTV use in the city back in August. You wanted six-month updates. We've had very little issues. We've had two incidents, one involving a juvenile in the trailer park that we couldn't find. We think that was actually a quad and not a UTV. We did have one juvenile at Lindmar, whose grandparents had bought the UTV the day before. He took it, went up to the school and rolled it in the parking lot, rolled up on its side. He actually got hurt. The officers did not issue a citation to him. They, they felt like the injury was bad and that the parents would probably take care of it, but then the grandparents more than the ticket that we would give them. But we've had two questions about where they could be operated on city streets. And we actually had two complaints that came in after the night that you guys approved them, but before it was published in the paper. So they weren't officially legal yet. But other than that, we've had no reported accidents on city streets. I don't see a reason to change any of the equipment requirements at this time unless somebody's got something they'd like us to look at. I just don't see that it's been an issue.
Questions? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Barcalow.
All right. So we just wanted to high level, give you the City Council an update. So as you recall, we get $7 million from the CPF funds for this project. So we are bringing some money in from it. But the private development portion of it, so typically for city policy, we have the overde- overdep policy. Alvernet Road is much wider than a typical twenty-six-foot wide street. Each year in the CIP, we budget $150,000. The section that they're proposing to do is 600,000. So obviously, that's more than one year of that project. We're assuming in fiscal year twenty six, there's going to be more than just this request, but we could say that this is the only request that's approved. But just want to high level kind of give this to you so you know when we start budgeting, that in fiscal year twenty six, there's going to be another $600,000 that we're going to need to somehow pay for or deviate from some other projects. And with the $7 million coming in for the bridge project, obviously, we don't want to leave a little link in that street not installed. Scogman can install that section of Alvernet Road cheaper than the city can. Being that it's a federal fund, so we don't want to just extend our project and do that. We'd rather have them build it, still inspect it, make sure it's up to city standards. But high level, just want to make sure that we're bringing the city council along. So we've asked developers to plan ahead instead of coming to us last minute and asking for money. So they have done such. And so we're just bringing this forward for discussion. So we would recommend in that year that we budget additional amount. So we'll, we'll put a CIP sheet in there and put it in there for ranking.
Yes, questions? Pretty straightforward. Okay, thanks, Mike. All right, next is the discussion regarding our upcoming agenda. First item that's marked for discussion is item eight, A eight on the, on page three of the agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to discuss prior to A eight? Okay, we'll go with A eight. We have Rachel ready to go.
So with the resignation of Councilmember Atkins, City Council must determine whether to fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election. If appointment is chosen, staff would be required to publish notice of intent. Letters of application would be due March thirtieth. And then on April sixth, we would have presentations from the candidates, the appointment and oath of office. If special election is chosen, we would notify the county, they would hold or schedule the special election between thirty-two to fifty-three days after notification. And then I was given the estimate cost of $35,000 to $45,000 for that special election. Regardless of which option is chosen, the person either appointed or elected would only hold the seat till December thirty first, because Ward One will be on the November election. So with the estimate cost into consideration, staff is recommending to move forward with appointment. And then it's important to note that if appointment is chosen, a petition can still be submitted, requiring a thousand signatures, I believe.
So you're looking for direction or?
On the agenda for Thursday, we have motion directing staff to publish notice of intent, and that would be to move forward with the appointment. So if you decide to go the other route, I would just need to know so I can change that for Thursday.
Okay, so is there anyone who would, who objects to that, that direction? I mean, we've had this happen numerous times in the past, and when it's so close to the election, does it make sense to spend $35,000 to $45,000? If there was three years left till the election, then it might make sense to have a special election. But that's just but anyone disagree with that? You have any strong feelings otherwise? So I think we're good with that
Okay.
direction on the agenda. You have the next item?
I do. So this on Thursday will be a resolution setting the public hearing for adoption of the twenty twenty-three Code of Ordinances. Tonight, I just wanted to give a review of the recodification process, some sample questions and responses, a brief overview of some of the changes made, and then a timeline for that adoption. Since March of twenty twenty-two, staff had been working with General Code to update our Code of Ordnances. General Code reviewed our Code of Ordinances for state code references, consistency throughout the code, and language, grammar, and other information. Staff also reviewed the code for process accuracy and to make sure that position and department titles were accurate. General Code returned the analysis with five hundred and sixty-five questions. The questions were then assigned to department representatives, departments reviewed and responded, and then each question was reviewed by myself or the city attorney before submitting back to General Code. This is just a sample question. All the questions had the same format. So we could either there were options provided from General Code. We could revise and enter our own revision. We could attach a redline version of the changes. We could select not to revise, or we could choose to defer the decision until a later time. And then here's just a few examples of some of the questions that we saw. So in this example, you can see our existing code had called out the year of the, the specific year of the statewide urban design standards. It was recommended to remove the year and staff selected to revise as suggested. Another example, our current code just had in parentheses, number of days to be determined for a certain process. General Code recommended that we put in a specific number of days, and staff selected to enter fourteen days. Another option or another question, it was recommended to expand the list to account for other motorized vehicles. And then General Code provided three options. Staff selected option two. And then this is an example of where we had state codes referenced that were repealed. So we removed those sections. Included in your packet is a document they provided titled Schedule A, and this just lists a summary of all the changes made. And then I just ask, you take time to review this the next couple of weeks, and if you see anything that you need more information on, you email me, let me know, and then we can provide information at the public hearing. So this is just a brief summary of some of the updates. We'll go more into detail at that public hearing. So there is a complete reorganization of the code, so a whole new numbering system and layout. We removed most business licenses. The Solicitor, Peddler, Transient Merchant License still remains. And as well as the requirements for certain business types, we just removed the requirement for a license. We're removing fees from the code. Instead of them being in the code, we will be approving a schedule of fees, and this document will be reviewed and adopted annually. We made sure processes outlined in the code match current practice. There are a few language title or department updates. I listed just a few examples. Then there was four chapters that were removed, two of which are now handled by Iowa, two were for franchise agreements that have expired. Zoning had probably the most changes. This is just a small selection of some of the changes. So a lot of definition revisions or removals, planned unit development regulations, parking and loading regulations, bicycle parking regulations, and then a change to the zoning board of adjustment. Their powers of granting or denying a special use permit. So this is the timeline for the adoption. On Thursday, we'll set the public hearing. Planning and zoning is reviewing the zoning code at their meeting on February fourteenth. The first, or the public hearing in first consideration will take place on the twenty-third here at council, and then final adoption on March twenty-third. All right, any questions?
Questions for Rachel? Thank you. Great work. Okay. Next item that's marked for discussion is C four on page four. Are there any items that any council member would like to discuss or ask questions about prior to C four? Hey, Chief, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Marion and Council. We're pleased to bring you a resolution for consideration as we develop the inaugural emergency operations plan and continuity of operations plan for the City of Marion. Good afternoon, Marion and council. We're pleased to bring you a resolution for consideration as we develop the inaugural emergency operations plan and continuity of operations plan for the city of Marion. The need for an emergency operations plan and continuity of operations plan was presented to the city council last November as part of the fire department's priority action plan. The city does not currently have either plan, and so you're going to hear me use E O P and COOP in exchange of. Those two plan names because we're going to refer to those quite a bit here. So what is an emergency operations plan? An E O P is a plan of action, a framework, which includes structure and processes to manage an emergency or crisis. An E O P allows government at very, various levels such as city, county, state, and federal. To communicate effectively and coordinate efforts to mitigate large scale events such as a national disaster. Lynn County E M A has an E O P for Lynn County. Marion's E O P will dovetail into the county plan as part of a scalable framework for emergency management. So what is a continuity of operations plan? A COOP is a plan to ensure mission essential functions continue to be performed during a wide range of emergencies or crises. The key elements of a COOP include the identification of essential functions, orders of succession. Delegations of authority, continuity of facilities, continuity of communications, vital records management, reconstitution, and training. These plans are essential to the preparedness of the city of Marion for the next large event. Though the development of this plan will spur additional knowledge to create local incident planning. For not just unplanned events, but planned events as well. All events and emergency management start local and they end local. Through the development and implementation of these plans. Marion will be more prepared for the next large event to serve the community most effectively. Three proposals were reviewed by staff with the recommendation of Atchison Consulting for the development of these plans. Atchison Consulting provides the best value to the city of Marion based on the experience and size of their team. Along with their recent work in Lynn County specifically with the city of Cedar Rapids. On the evaluation and development of their emergency operations plan. Local work and emergency management translate to more efficient and effective plan development as regional structure and continuity creates value for Marion. In fact, the project lead Kath Lee Atchison. Is facilitating a FEMA hazardous weather and flooding preparedness class with Lynn County E M A tomorrow and Thursday. Of which I plan on attending. Both plans, the E O P and COOP, are scheduled for completion by late summer twenty twenty three. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for chief? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Chief, thanks for undertaking this because as you and I just interacted, I have an affinity for this kind of planning effort. I guess the big question is, and I'm, I'm using the ratio as a backdrop. Certainly Lynn County and Marion need to have a real strong. Similarly structured, if I can say that. Interface. How does, how will this also then interface with Cedar Rapids and some of the other communities? And in that answer, I guess, if you could just comment about how this will somewhat mimic the FEMA incident command system.
Yeah, I'll start with the incident command, which will translate into the mutual aid work with, with the city of Cedar Rapids and others. So the framework that I was referring to in here is the incident command system that integrates local emergency planning all the way up to FEMA. And so when I use the, the explanation that all emergencies start local and end local, that's exactly what that means. One incident starts. As big as it may be, we respond as a, as a local community emergency resource. And that incident expands based on the resources needed to mitigate and manage it. And so that will integrate all of the resources that we would have available here in Marion locally. Until those resources are exceeded, and at that time, it would then dovetail into the county's plan. And so the integration of that, and I use that term that dovetail into it. Is the essential piece for the scale, scalable nature of managing large scale emergencies. As it scales up and additional resources are need, whether it's through county mutual aid. Or state aid and even federal aid coming into our community. That will then scale back down into local emergency management as we conclude the event. So the partnership with our local partners within Lynn County. The value that's captured here in the recent work by this consultant is that they are doing their plan. And they're doing, getting, they're doing right now, we're getting ready to undertake. And so there will be value captured in a lot of the processes there for their community. Based on the plan that exists within Lynn County. For us to capitalize and integrate then further into county resources, which would have already been identified through their planning process.
That's good. Go ahead, Steve.
So after the derecho, I think I had some of the same questions as Graham were thinking of like today. It's dangerous. But after the derecho, there were some reports completed that pointed out some weaknesses to our response plan. As an area to the derecho. And so after this is completed, then is it your opinion that everything that was outlined as a weakness? In those reports would be. Rectified and, and resolved, or at least a better plan put into place that would take care of those concerns?
Yes, this plan is to ensure that Marion's prepared for the next disaster broadly, whether it's a natural disaster. Or anything else that we have a structure in place to manage that and to get the resources needed. I will add that, just, just because this plan is developed, it will continuously be evaluated. Now, we're going to need to train and be able to implement this. That is one of the essential pieces for this to work. This isn't, this isn't a plan that sits on a shelf. Our team has got to, got to dig in, which we're committed to, and we will ensure that, that we work this plan to make sure it can work for our community.
Well, the city's already, and I think the county already invested quite a bit of money into the communication systems. Which is obviously an integral part of the success of the plan that everybody's working on and outlining as well, so. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Absolutely, and those will as well continue to be evaluated for their performance.
Okay.
Thank you very much for, for bringing this forward for sure. We've needed it for a while. Does this apply to something like pandemic, or it's just, it's?
It does, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Well, because when we were having the meetings at Lynn County. Area wide for the, when the pandemic started, it wasn't very clear. You know, and I thought that it should, you know, an emergency operations plan should be, should be applied, but it was, it was kind of a. There's a confusion around that.
Your honor, go ahead. Follow up. Yeah, so maybe on that point. If this planning philosophy and structure is applicable to a pandemic situation, it really is multi hazards.
That's correct.
Could you, could you give a little context as to what the multi hazard? You know, what, just give us a snapshot of what fits in the continuum of multi hazards.
Well, I mean.
tornado response would.
Absolutely. So the, the big one that comes to mind is natural disasters and weather and flooding. The plan itself will be a template that can then be modular and applied to numerous. Hazards and threats to the community. So if that's a flooding event, if it's a pandemic. What it will do is establish roles, essential roles and processes. In order to essentially adjust how we do normal operations. Into an emergency operations mode to where things are tracked for purposes of. Reconciliation later in a way that fits within the FEMA network. Should there be a disaster declaration to where monies would be recoverable? Having all of those processes in place on the front end saves us on the back end for any event, whether. Yeah, whether it's a pandemic, whether it's a tornado, whether it's a flood, whether it's a, even a, a building collapse that doesn't necessarily go. Go federal, but that definitely may be activate a county plan. To where we would quickly exceed our resources here locally potentially was, was something like that.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Awesome. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So no items marked on the remainder of page four. Through page six. Any items for discussion on those? Okay, then I, on page seven, items E one and two. Any questions on those? All right, we'll move on to E three, Mr. Barcalo.
Yes, so we will have the project calendar for the twenty twenty three Hannah Park improvements. So the portion here is a, a small portion of what actually is going to happen in the whole scheme of the entire park. So we're just going to do the infrastructure and the, the components that need to happen. So that the playground equipment or the pavilion can be installed later by others, so getting that foundation in there. So this is what we're getting bid out, so it's only a fraction of the total project. So there's a lot of different components, and Seth can talk to all those different components that are going in, but this is only laying the foundation.
Yeah, Seth, can you give us an outline of what the improvements will be in Hannah Park besides the pavilion because I, I don't recall those details myself?
Yeah, so we've, so it's a replacement of the existing pavilion, but if you remember, the pavilion had restroom facility attached to it, so. The improvements of the product, project is, is with a new pavilion of being on site along with a, a new restroom facility. And then we did remove. A few playground structures that were at its end of life, and so we are. Providing some two to five playground, playground equipment specifically for the two to five year olds on, on the site.
Okay, so if I recall, the, the C I P has three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Set aside for this, so the majority of that is for the pavilion?
So it's for, so about seventy one thousands for the pavilion, and then for the kid, and it's all. It's a middle structure that will be with electrical lighting. And then about a hundred and fifteen thousands for the restroom facility and the restrooms. Prefab concrete restroom with stainless steel fixtures. It's going to have. Locking, automatic locking doors similar to what we have at Lao Park for the new playground area, so we'll be able to close it down at nighttime. And then around thirty thousand for the playground itself and. Staff will be doing the construction of those kits. We've been putting those kits together, the playground. Together at many of the other parks. In the system.
Okay, will this stay as an open air pavilion similar to what it is now?
Yes, it is. And one of the big reasons why for the open air and for the structure itself is just the high. The high frequency of vandalism we see in the park, so.
Okay. It's, it's great to see improvements to that, to that park on the south side of town, you know, just. We continue to provide facilities all, you know, in every, in every corner of this, of the city, and. I know the soccer mini pitch has been very, very popular, so that's, that was a great addition to that park. Okay, any other questions for Mike on this? Okay, thank you, Mike. Next item under community development is F one, Nukasha.
Do you need to get again? Mayor and city council. Just wanted to bring this up that we are actually are bringing forth a contract for fabrication. To allow Carebricks Farmer Synergy Metal Works to construct or to build, weld. Adhere, the, the columns together. But they won't be placed yet until Federal Highway approves this, so I noted in the memo that. As prices increase for materials. The artist would like to get contract underway so she can get underway with the construction of those, and then ultimately the city would store these.
So we're talking about the decorative items on, on the, on the pillars?
Yep, four of them.
Circular. Pieces there.
Yep, and the bridge has already been designed with the, with the bolt patterns in place to support these. Any questions?
So she wants to get started on fabrication because materials prices keep rising, that's?
Yes, and she also, she's with her fabrication company that she'd be working in their facility. She'd also like to. Get that contract underway and, and kind of be done with the work.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Kesha, do you have any insight to when the Federal Highway Commission? Will? Give us the green light to get these structures onto the, under the bridge?
So engineering, our engineering consultant is still, still working on getting the final documents approved, right? And then it goes to D O T, D O T does their final walkthrough of the project, which could take. A number of months to get them here, do final walkthrough. We submit all final documentation to them to close out the project, and then it could be, you know, so that could take a number of months yet. Even though people have been using it, right? We had the ribbon cutting in July. So it could take another couple of years. As we're, we're being cautious to say a couple of years.
And we plan on, once it goes to F H W A, we plan on following up with our federal delegation. To see if there's the ability to put some pressure on to get that quickly turned around, but. Between one and two years is, is what we're told for that review.
And we're not to that.
Yeah, we're, we're still at the I dot, still in the I dot review phase.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Kesha, why don't you remind everybody what the size of these columns are, and then the second question? There, that's a comment, but the second, my question would be following up with that is. There was discussion last fall. About maybe once they are completed, if the federal government has not given us the green light. To install them, we, there was discussion about maybe using them somewhere in the city. Is there any more thought? Or, or substance to that idea?
So the, the total height would be, I think it's twenty to twenty five feet.
Okay.
Tall, and so these, these will be significant, they will be internally lit. I, I don't recall the conversation with that. I'm questioning if that was.
We had.
Had while I was.
We, that's right, we're on maternity. We, we did have, we did have initial discussions with the council on some ideas. We wanted to be on the front end of that. We haven't had any other further conversations as to, as to those, flushing out those options that we presented to council back then. So having them on display somewhere like Lao Park or having them moved. Because the storage cost was going to be significant.
Does, does Kara have a timeframe on when she gets to go, go, to go ahead to start them now? Does she kind of have a timeframe and when they might be completed then?
It was a six month timeframe.
Six months, okay, so. By end of summer then. Okay.
Other questions on this one?
Thank you.
Okay. Just keep looking forward to seeing the final finished product sometime. Give us something to look forward to. Okay, next item was for Dave.
This is a resolution, I T C Midwest is seeking deferral of public improvements associated with their site down there on Highway one hundred and forty four Street. It was approved two years ago for a future substation. At that location through a conditional use process, and I think this council just started to come ready flat. A month or two ago, and then you'll be seeing the final plot shortly if this deferrals approved. Specifically, they're looking for, the deferrals they're looking for is a water main that will loop. From Long Highway one hundred, then up forty four Street, up the west side of forty four Street, that'll be the I T C side. In addition to that, they're looking for deferrals for sidewalk and curb and gutter along the west side of forty four Street. They even work with the engineering department, water department. Both departments are supportive of the request. There's no, there's nothing prohibiting them from putting those improvements in. It's just a timing issue. Water's concern is having a long loop without any services going nowhere, so you have some underground utility that's going really unused. Darren and engineering's concern was just, we have a curb and gutter section, we have the city sections to the north and east that would be. Improved, it'll still be that rural kind of the gravel ditch back up. So you'd have some gaps in sewer and just road, and they wanted to avoid that as well, so they're, they're generally supportive of requests as well. Again, no reason they can't install it, it's just, it's just timing that I T C is just trying to avoid and. Putting additional dollars into the project until the improvements are actually needed. for a larger network.
Even the sidewalk deferral, we're also okay with?
Yeah, there's no sidewalk to the north, and then they they really don't like to bring a sidewalk down to the highway where there's no ability to cross.
So you said in water main, no bringing water down there at all. So wouldn't wouldn't you want a fire hydrant by this location?
Not with electrical. They use a they use a different process. I'd like to let the fire chief address that. But no, the water didn't didn't need it and and they it was electric. It's all just electrical substations. So
I can't, I'm trying to remember if there was a building or anything.
No, no, there's a there's a little tiny control building, but it's a concrete.
Concrete building.
They painted in and placed it.
So you said that there's nothing that would prevent them from installing the improvements, but is there would part of the deferral be the city's right to require the improvements when we feel like they're needed?
Correct. The it'll be placed in the memory, it'll be placed in the memory and remember agreement for the final plat. We'll lay out, which will be coming in a week or two. We'd lay out if approved, we'd lay out all the conditions, specifically the type of improvements and some triggers for when it could occur, but ultimately it could occur tomorrow if the city councils are deemed, not put it in now.
Yeah, if conditions change or something that we
Yeah, tomorrow, next week, two years, ten years down the road. But it's whatever the city council decides it's necessary to put it in, they'd be required to put it in. And hopefully it'd be timed with a a project that would make sense to complete.
Never know what might what might happen across the street, whatever, you know. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, Dave, this is maybe unrelated to the deferral. But in the packet, there was a preliminary plat of this property shown, which was really quite entertaining for me to examine. And it shows chain link fence around the substation. I think we might generally have awareness of in other locations of the nation recently. There has been, I'm going to say it as I'm thinking it, sniper fire into unguarded substations to take them out of service and and cause havoc. And so I just I certainly would be interested as ITC moves forward with preparing for construction on this, that they're examining the protection factor that needs to be applied to critical resources. Because in in one form of analysis, if they harden this facility to a degree to prevent that kind of disruption, that then also reduces the risk and probability that we have to respond to an emergency out there. So I really think as you engage in discussions with them about this property, please bring that up. And I I just have a sensitivity to that kind of concern. And plus, what's the equipment that's going in there, whether it be the various switches as well as the transformers and the capacitors that go in there? Those are long lead items. And so if this is a critical piece of ITC's infrastructure, if anything goes out due to vandalism or sniper fire, if you will, that could be disabling to them and the community for quite a period of time. So anyhow, I just
tomorrow, and I believe they will they will have representative here on Thursday as well. So you thanks relay it again if you want.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions, concerns, comments on this one? Okay, next item, Dave.
All right, this one's a little more unique. This is a resolution seeking an encroachment of a monument style sign into the city on right away. A little hard to see. There's a little red dot in the middle of the image there. That is the location of the proposed sign. Then obviously the sign they're proposing is shown there as well. This is a slightly updated rendering than was in the staff report. So hopefully you refer to this one because that's when we it shows the side path in there. So the applicant Platinum Development, they're a local home builder or builder here in town. They own the building to the south, continues to hometown pets, I think it's called, a couple of the businesses in that strip mall. There's a sixty foot frontage road between the building and the highway right away. And then you get the highway or the tenth avenue right away. They would like to put the sign obviously out as far as they can. On their own property, it would only be about ten feet off the building. There's just no room for a sign there and it has zero visibility from the highway. So they are requesting to place it out into the city right away. You can see the dimensions on there. It's about a little over fourteen feet from the newly installed side path. I believe it was forty, was it forty-one on the edge of the road and about forty feet or fifty feet from their own building. So it's out there quite a ways. The black heavy line is their property line. Completely understand the request. It's got poor visibility being set so so far back from tenth avenue with that old frontage road there. So this is their this is their solution. Unfortunately, we do recommend approval or recommend denial of the request. It's just bad precedence that place signs in the right of way, especially to this degree. We do have one that I recall. It's only about a foot and a half into the right of way in an industrial park on a local industrial road, so not the same. But again, I understand the request. We just can't can't support it at this time.
That was going to be my question or comment. I mean, you know, I can understand and we, you know, we've done it before where something is encroaching a few inches onto the right of way. And so you make an accommodation of that, but this is completely placing it entirely on the right of way. And I don't remember that we've done that for any anyone else. I mean, there's well, there may be one, one not one prior instance, but with the Legion.
The Legion, yeah, I think there was an existing sign and when the city took some right away or realigned that street, the sign was and the buildings actually are sticking in the right ways.
But you know, how does this, even if it if it was allowed, how does it visually, how does it line up with other signs along that highway? You know, it's just going to be sticking out all by itself.
It it in this location, it's going to be on its own until you get to Ed Reed's property, I think he or in the property. That frontage road goes away basically at Hawkeye Auto. So all those other signs, once you get to Hawkeye Auto are probably roughly where this sign is at here. But with this stretch of road and frontage road, it's just, it's a big ask and then
precedent is a big deal here. I mean, once you open that door, very hard to go back.
Correct.
Go ahead.
So immediately to the south of the proposed signs location is parking.
Yes, sir.
That is within the right of way.
Yes.
Was that previously approved?
With the frontage road, the when it was approved back in the seventies, it said, and I'll quote it here. Resolution clarified the city's requirement for the installation and dedication of the frontage road and recognized that on-street parking will probably be permitted on the north side. This was from nineteen seventy-three. I couldn't find anything that said yes to this parking in this location. But the seventy-three resolution said will probably be there. So they just either did it or I just couldn't find the resolution that approved something formal. So
It's grandfathered. Oh, yeah, it's clear.
Yeah, so all this, what he what what grants was referred, there's all this parking right here in this location is all into the city right away. Immediately backing up to the sign.
But with approval.
With probably approved from nineteen seventy-three.
Maybe, not sure.
I I could not find anything that specifically allowed it.
Well, I just my comment on this, and I I agree with the mayor, I setting a precedent for this, which quite honestly seems to be sort of an extenuation of perhaps a bit of questionable use for parking of public right of way anyway, because we don't know what those approvals were way back when. Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to reconcile my own mind that parking would remain. And the question then is, is there any other intent for the public right of way that that sign creates a further impediment to the preuse of the public right of way, given the parking's presence? I don't like this from a precedent standpoint. I'm just thinking, do we make the situation worse in that particular location for something that's already being done? And I I don't expect necessarily an answer on that. I get it's just something that's rattling around in my head as I read this and looked at the map and had a cup of coffee.
Well, go ahead.
So who maintains that frontage road in the parking there?
It is city owned, but Ryan did inform me that they haven't been plowing that area. It's been taken care of by the business owners in that location.
Same with maintaining of the street itself in the parking lot? Because there, no, I would say it's not in great shape there.
I don't know if we've ever done it. I doubt Ryan, if we've done any maintenance in there at all besides.
No, we've we've never maintained it. It's never been built to the standards of the city street. Therefore, you never accepted maintenance on it. So it's just a road on a right of way and not
It's a very glorified driveway, frontage road that just, yeah. There's about four to five properties that utilize it. Ideal windows, there's a flux. It terminates at the Hawkeye Auto. It actually doesn't so about four or five properties that utilize it.
Right.
And they take care of.
I just, my comment on it is that I understand where you're setting a precedent of doing that in the right of way. But this is a very different situation versus ninety-nine percent of the city. Because the that because of that frontage road and the parking and just the whole way that's set up there. Has it ever been, I've like asked them if they're interested in purchasing?
That would be an option. I'm sure I'll be talking to the developer depending on the direction the council takes on Thursday if he wants to. I'm sure that will come up after this meeting.
Especially if we're not maintaining it or doing anything with it. Why is it technically the cities?
It would take four or five property owners to get on to do that. It would take four or five property owners all jointly purchase their share or then place the ingress egress easement over. We have city utilities in there that would have an easement over it as well. There's sewer and water. Well, the water is pretty high up, the sewers, the sewers, that pink line down the middle of the road. Pink, purple, I'm not sure quite what color it is on.
Right.
And water is pretty high on right by the trail.
The thing is, when they built that building, they knew where it's located and they knew they knew the bits of the of the right of way, the the public right of way and all that. I mean, they made the choice to build it there. Go ahead.
So this is what did, I'm going back to this nineteen seventy-something, whatever potential, what this looked like in front of their building in nineteen seventy-something as far as where was one fifty-one at that point? I mean, did it, I didn't live here that, but Will wasn't born. But but what did it look like? This was out on the edge of town.
Yes.
This was this, this is kind of a property that has has been there, like the little house that sits there is the city grew up kind of around it, right? So does anybody know when they bought this coming to that point and what they're looking at and what they could do? They've kind of been sitting there and the city's kind of developed around this property. And it's kind of this weird situation that we're faced with now as a result, right? Because I'm guessing Highway one fifty-one didn't look like it did. Maybe it did.
I can verify it with old aerials for Thursday.
Yeah.
It could have been an old lane that led to some house in the back there. It could have been a dirt gravel road that served a business or two. It may have been nothing. I could, I can I can go back with some nineteen sixties and seventies aerials and see if I can identify what it was.
I'm just thinking the the Y is a little bit back from this, but at that, and when the old Marion Y was built, that was the gravel road led to the Marion Y, and that was in the sixties. So I I mean, so I feel for this a little bit because they've this building has existed and the city's growing up around it. And now they're trying to work within our development. So I like to see how we could help through this process, but I don't know if this is the help that we should be doing or if it's more of just kind of a redo of what this, how we get this area to fit into what's happening and it's and the neighbors. And I'm sorry, I think I missed this. So the tall and I was trying to get a even look at the earlier pieces in our packet, what we're seeing in that sign, that's where the red circle is, and then they want where that red line is. So what's on the red circle in the front, like off of forty-four?
This right here? That is likely, it looks like it might be power.
Okay, so that wasn't meant to show that there's one sign going there and they want and then the red sign going here. That's something unrelated.
That's that's another service. It looks, it's might be, it might be something for the signals or it might be
Storms or
Storms or, now the sign location is right here with a little hand.
That red line, okay.
Yep.
So they really have, because of their existing property line, even with their use of that, our suggestion to say, well, you can put it where your parking is, that is, doesn't even solve it because that's in our right of way as well.
Correct.
So there's really, they have really no option for that angle of a sign for that host tenants.
Correct.
And this has never come up before from them.
We, I've been talking to, I've been talking to the developer off and on for quite some time on it, and it's finally kind of moved off center. He's he's just ready to ask.
Okay.
I I kept saying no, and this you guys are the approving bodies. So yeah, he finally took it there. So
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dave, I would lean with with Nick as far as not approving this. However, it does, so this building has multiple owners. It's not just one owner for the entire building.
Five or six tenants.
Okay, that's what I, that's always what I thought. It was one owner and then several tenants. Okay, so so given that, I guess regardless of what we do on Thursday, it might make sense to at least have some discussion to button up some of these factors about maintenance. Who's doing what on an ongoing basis? And maybe they'll come back with a counter proposal.
It is all I
It might make sense for everybody and on how we do it, but certainly at a minimum, you know, we need to make have some agreement on maintenance, the the level of it, who does what? Because obviously none of that is back there in seventy-three. By the way, I I was out of high school by then, Will.
I was in college.
Who else?
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Hey, this brings us to our closed session motion.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I of the Code of Iowa.
Moving seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters as permitted under section twenty-one point five one I of the code. Here we have the council's legal counsel's statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find this seem to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-five or twenty-one point five one I.
Ms. Atkins, yes, Mr. Dunson.
Yes.
Mr. Harper.
Yes.
Mayor Abulosli.
Yes.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes.
Ms. Menser.
Yes.
Mr. Sternet.
Yes. Hey, thank you for joining us. We're now adjourned to closed session.